Good evening. We're going to begin with our work session of the City Council of the City of Cape May, New Jersey. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. It is Wednesday, June 7th, 2023. The time is now 5:08. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Under the Open Public Meetings Law, notice of this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald on the press of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council and posted on the Cape May City website and Cape May City Hall bulletin board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio recorded and video streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. The City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember McDade?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer is absent. Mayor Mullick?
Here.
Councilmember Yeager?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillen Schwartz?
Here.
City Manager Vole is absent. Deputy City Clerk Dillon?
Here.
We also have our City CFO, Kevin Haney. Mayor, I believe we have a deletion and an addition this evening. Is that correct?
We are deleting the engineer's report due to the fact that our engineer was here yesterday instead of today. And we are adding...
We have Resolution 164-06, 2023. This is Resolution approving a form acknowledgement of responsibilities for construction activities for use by construction office.
Do I have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
All right. So that was to add 164 and delete the engineer's report inclusive, correct?
Yes.
All right. We have the updates next.
City Solicitor, any updates?
Just a heads up to council, all of council. We have two land use related items that are probably going to be presented at the next council meeting, one of which is the HPC updated design standards. And then the second thing is there was recently some recommendations from the planning board for master plan reexamination items for council to potentially take action on. And again, these are items that are referenced in the reexamination report, but the proposal here is actually make adjustments to the code. So I'll have a draft ready for council at the next meeting to consider those.
Okay. All right. With the city manager, Vole, which we wish our best to. He's feeling fine, but he was, he did have COVID-19, so he's out and I think out until Tuesday. But we wish you well, Mr. Vole. And I'm going to just do a little mayor's report then to replace our city manager report, because there's a couple important things to highlight as we get ready for the season. And I see Eric Przynski and Rusty here as well. You guys from DPW have just been knocking it out of the park, because a lot of my updates are involving you guys, so I'll give you a lot of credit. We're up to now 57 new parking spaces in downtown Cape May, which I think if you would have said, we're adding 57 new parking spaces this year, people would last, last two years, but people would have been kind of shocked. But we're up to 57 new spaces now. Showers, I think you have, I think your last update was they'll be finished by next week?
By tomorrow.
Okay, by tomorrow. That's better.
By next week.
Okay, well, okay, so...
I'll be standing tomorrow.
So our superintendent has informed me that the showers will be completed by tomorrow and water will be completed by next week. So most of them are on right now, but maybe half of them, well, at least half of them are on. The other half will...
Up to Hurry Street is whether or not...
Okay. All right. So, and they look really good. Nice job. Not intrusive, kind of minor and look nice. The bathrooms, the rehabilitation of the bathrooms, really looking good. The one, kind of the last one that needs to be completed, right there in front of Peter Shields, I went by yesterday. It looks like it's almost complete. I'm sure the inside still has some work to be done, but do you have a date on that?
I think there's just one nail.
Okay, perfect. So another one, another one's completed. And they really do look nice. Anybody who doesn't know, they redid the whole exterior. And also, it used to be just kind of the roof line to the wall. They extended out the soffits, gave it a little bit of definition for, it's a trailer bathroom, but made it look as nice as possible. But also, I know did the interior really well. Almost all of the interior is in epoxy. It's easily cleanable, and you really did a nice job with that. The only one that isn't completed, they did the interior, is right in front of Convention Hall. And hopefully, maybe by next meeting, and we hope, we'll...
July.
By July.
Early July.
Okay. We'll have the bathrooms behind the beach tag office. If you're familiar with the beach tag office on the beachfront, the room that had been just really kind of used for storage will be converted into a public restroom, which will allow us to get rid of the trailer bathroom in front of Convention Hall. And that is why these guys did not do the exterior of that building. So if anyone asks, that's why. Also, just an update on Jackson Street. Obviously, they've been redoing the sewer line between Perry and out front of Colliers. That is complete by tomorrow, which would allow for paving, I believe, by next Monday. So that's, that's good news. And just in general, on paving, all of the city streets that were, we had underbid this, this spring, were completed by Memorial Day. The last thing that has not been completed by Memorial Day is this sewage line from Jackson Street to, on Jackson Street, from Perry to Lafayette to Colliers in front there. But they will be complete by, I believe, June 12th. So that'll be nice. Obviously, it's nice to get those things done before Memorial Day. That one piece did not get finished for kind of the county project there. But in any event, everything else was complete and should be complete by the 12th. And last but not least, the Quanahs Club project really turned out really nice. Just Phase 1, but they got in all the sidewalks, ADA accessible sidewalks, got in all the utilities for the bathroom and other things to come in the fall, and also added some parking to that little park there. So it really turned out nice for Phase 1, but the bulk of the improvements will be made in Phase 2 come the fall. Other than that, I think that fills in for Mike as much as I possibly can. With that, we have an employee that we'd like to recognize who has done an excellent job, and I've seen her work firsthand. So Brenda, if you would join me up at the front. Brenda, you've been voted the Employee of the Month amongst your peers, and I just want to congratulate you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You'll have to get this signed by Mike later when I sign it. More importantly, here's a gift card in there for you.
Thank you.
And I just, just to express a couple of nice words that, these are all words that were said about you by your fellow employees. Brenda has been working for the city since 2011, and first started as a seasonal laborer before becoming full-time in 2020. The city employees gave these reasons for nominating you for Employee of the Month. She goes above and beyond in all of her cleaning. Her work is exemplary. She's dependable, strong work ethic with a positive attitude. She's always smiling, which I know firsthand. She's always willing and helpful to train others. She creates a happy and healthy environment and keeps Cape May looking sparkling. I can't say it any better than that, but thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Yeah. Let's get a picture.
All right. Thank you.
All right. So next, we have the appointment of the Cape May City Poet Laureate. We have Resolution 156-06, 2023, Resolution proclaiming Dr. Sylvia Kuner Bear as the Cape May City Poet Laureate for the year 2023.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any, any questions or comments, council? Go ahead.
No, no, I'm fine. No, go ahead.
Well, I'll just say that Dr. Sylvia has done such a nice job representing the city of Cape May. You really couldn't ask for a better poet laureate. She's really had some wonderful poems, and you can't say enough about her, so.
Yes, City. High energy, and her poetry is always appreciated by people riding on Michigan, which Mike knows.
Next-door neighbor.
Next-door neighbor, yeah, yeah.
And anyone who, I don't, is the poetry, it's not out yet?
It's not out yet, no.
I think it's after school.
It's later, yes.
Out on Michigan Avenue, she puts poems in her tree and calls it the poetry. And it's really, it's awesome.
For children and for adults, different versions, yes. It's cute.
With that, roll call.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
We have an ordinance for introduction. We have Ordinance 504, 2023, an ordinance amending the city code regarding prohibited acts determined to be a breach of peace.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Questions or comments, council?
Yes. My only, I guess, question or maybe even a comment was, Mr. Gillen Schwartz, you and I had a conversation about that this doesn't include language around the curfew that currently exists for juveniles, I believe, under the age of 18?
That's correct.
Okay. And I was just wondering, maybe just for the public, since we don't have this, that language in there. Currently, what is the curfew times?
So roughly speaking, during the wintertime, the curfew is 11:00 PM, and then during the summertime, in season, the curfew's midnight.
Right. I'm not sure, I mean, I wouldn't ask anybody here for the history of it, but, you know, is it something that we should consider? And unfortunately, the chief is not here tonight, but consider having a consistent timeframe, you know, making it more consistent both for his police officers as well as for the public's knowledge, rather than having varying times. And 11 o'clock seems, you know, a reasonable time.
It does happen in here, doesn't it?
This is the amended one, yeah.
But this is, this is what we have, isn't it?
No, we currently have this.
So I'll just point out, point out for council that there was an additional redline copy of the ordinance to address that comment circulated. So just to draw a distinction between the one that was in the packet, which just deals with breach of the peace language. And then there was an additional redline copy to address that comment.
Right.
And if council wanted to take that up in that form or any other modified form, you could discuss and amend that on first reading, if you choose to do so. So that's why that was prepared and provided as a supplement.
And, you know, so I think I would comment, I kind of like the consistency idea. I'm not sure that it's really an imposition on anybody. 18-year-olds and younger, an 11 o'clock curfew seems reasonable, summer and wintertime, just to be consistent. And, you know, everybody knows what's going on in neighboring communities, and I guess this is just, maybe it'll help that situation slightly, maybe avoid it from occurring here. And so I, I wouldn't have any problem at all changing that curfew to 11:00 PM for 18 and under.
Just in furtherance of that comment, and this may help put this in context, I'm going to point to 208.5. That's not in the draft ordinance, but it's something that is in our current code book, and it indicates that there is an exemption for any juvenile who is gainfully employed, a bona fide student of a school of evening instruction, an attendance at a function sponsored by a religious or school organization, or an attendance at a properly supervised recreational program during the time necessary to travel between the juvenile's residence and the place of assembly. In other words, recognizing...
There's caveats there, should the circumstances...
Recognizing that some people may work late and maybe riding their bike or walking home.
Right.
And that exemption is found throughout the state and other code for your code. So they recognize the practicality, that there may be juveniles working late or participating in a worthwhile program.
And, and the chief did share, and I'm sure that some of you may have seen, I mean, currently, you know, they do have a very lengthy standard operating procedure that they, the force does follow when dealing with under, you know, juveniles. So I think adding consistency in the time, I think, gives them even, you know, an ability to not have to think about what day of the year it is, what month of the year it is. And it's just from a public standpoint, education, it's being consistent. And that, that was the only reason I thought we should bring it up for discussion here, so.
And if I may?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And Maureen, you and I, councilwoman, we've had discussion with this as well as Mr. Gillen Schwartz. And I, knowing that this was going to possibly come up, I also contacted chief as well, and he was sorry that he couldn't be here tonight. He said he was fine with either the 11 or 12 o'clock. So to me, that would say that there really is not that much of an issue. Maybe we hold this off until next month, until he can be here. I don't know. But, you know, I know that you cited other areas in our code that talks about, you know, I think about anybody who's, you know, up to 18 years old or under 18. They're driving sunset hour for them is midnight. So, and I think about myself growing up. You know, we had, you know, sometimes it was 11:30 curfew in the summertime. Summertime was different than the wintertime. So I don't know. I'm not married to this.
And perhaps we just wait until the chief is here for the next time. Is that reasonable for us to not make the amendment now, or, and since it would be a second reading at the next meeting?
We could always just introduce a new ordinance.
Okay.
Allow the, I think the breach of the peace language was something that the police department was looking for.
Yeah.
And the reason for that is, you know, a lot of police departments in the coastal communities are dealing with an Attorney General's directive right now, dealing with interactions with juveniles. And that is creating some difficulty with the level of interaction that you can have depending on the nature of the, of the violation, whether it's an ordinance or state-level violation. So deeming certain ordinance violations as a breach of the peace, I think the police department and many other departments view that as helpful on the enforcement side. So I don't see a reason to hold back on that. You can proceed. And then we can have a separate ordinance for...
And amends or revises.
On the next meeting, and that can be discussed, you know, on its own.
Yeah, that's fine. Yep.
So to be clear then, because I'm holding one that has the curfew redlined, we'd be voting on just the breach of peace portion of this?
The original ordinance that was in the published packet.
Got it. Okay. Everyone clear with that?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or comments on the breach of peace? Roll call.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
And we have 505, 2023, an ordinance amending Section 10-83 of the Cape May City Code to update the appointment duties in term of city engineer.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, council?
I can just offer a general comment on this, as to why we're doing this. The state authority for appointing an engineer for a municipality is pretty broad. I mean, you can have professional services agreement. You can have an employee. For some reason, our code was just out of habit, I think, focused on a professional services contract, but we're by no means limited to that. So what this ordinance does as a housekeeping matter is update what council recently did, which is bring on an in-house engineer and provide future administrations with the flexibility to deal with this either way. You know, you may have a vacancy, and you can fill that with a professional services contract, or there may be another, you know, employment opportunity in the future. But just leaving both options open, I don't see a reason not to do that. So that's all that this ordinance really does.
Any questions or comments on that, council? Roll call.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Next, we have ordinances for second reading and consideration for adoption. We have 498-2023, an ordinance to accept a road widening dedication of a portion of Block 1160, Lot 53, on the official tax map of the city of Cape May in the area of Yacht Avenue. And there's a public hearing this evening, Mayor.
Is anyone here wishing to speak on 498? Ordinance 498. Seeing none, we can close public comment. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments on this, council? No? Roll call.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Next, we have Ordinance 500-2023, bond ordinance providing for various water sewer utility improvements by and in the city of Cape May, in the county of Cape May, state of New Jersey, appropriating $2 million therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $2 million bonds or notes of the city to finance the costs thereof, with a public hearing, Mayor.
Is anyone here wishing to speak on Bond Ordinance 500, 2023? Seeing none, we can close public comment. Any, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, council?
No.
No? Roll call.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Ordinance 501-2023, bond ordinance providing for various 2023 capital improvements, buy-in in the city of Cape May, in the county of Cape May, state of New Jersey, appropriating $5,556,285 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $5,291,700 bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the costs thereof, with a public hearing.
Is anyone here wishing to speak on Ordinance 501, 2023? Good evening.
Stacy Shan, 928 Columbia Avenue. The reason why I'm up here is to discuss underneath this ordinance, we, underneath vehicles and equipment, you have a beach tractor, which should be underneath the beach utility. The beach utility should be self-liquidating. We have a beach tag fees that we have raised in the past to cover these expenses. It also includes in this bond Gurnee Street restrooms, which should be covered by beach tags. In the past, in 2022, we had an ordinance 468 that talked about public buildings, and we had $375,000 that was for promenade buildings and grounds. I guess I'm just bringing up at this point to see if it was ever used, or are we going to use some of that money for the restrooms this year? But that's a side note. I'm also bringing up that we passed last year, Ordinance 467, 2022, which talks about the ordinance amending Chapter 10 of the city code regarding the allocation funding for the tourism utility. Again, it's supposed to be self-liquidating. And in that ordinance that we passed, this will enable the city to separately account and budget for all tourism, recreation and civic activities, and to the extent available, transfer surplus funds within the tourism utility to the current fund as a contribution towards debt service obligations for Convention Hall, thus relieving the burden of the taxpayers in the payment of such debt services, as well as financing operation aspects of Convention Hall and the tourism. This had to do with when we had increased the room tax from 2% to 3%. And again, it talks in there about the tourism being self-liquidating. And again, in that bond that we're talking about right now, we have in there HVAC replacement underneath the five, roof repair and security upgrade for Convention Hall Center, which should be underneath a tourism utility, if we're going to have a tourism utility. It should be in place for those reasons. So my point, bringing it all together, is this ordinance is a capital. It doesn't talk about the utility such as the beach or the tourism utility, and they should be separated out. In the past, we've had beach bonding, where the beach utility pays for the bonds. And if you ask me, we are overstepping here, and now the taxpayers are paying for beach utility items, tractor, restrooms, that should be paid solely on by the beach utility.
Thank you. I'd actually agree with you on at least the beach tractor. I'm not so, the...
I can speak to, um...
Could you speak to that?
Yeah, beach tractor. So correct that items related to beach should be paid for out of beach capital and water sewer, out of water sewer capital. The wording in Section 3 that lists the items that can be applied to capital, this doesn't require us to purchase those items. This is just a suggestion of the types of items that can be purchased. So we're not required to purchase the beach tractor or the Gurnee Street bathroom improvements out of general capital. If we wanted to amend the ordinance, we would have to incur expenses related to re-advertising and redrafting the ordinance with bond counsel. So since we're not required to pay for them, I figured the ordinance still stands.
We've always said in the past that the beach bathrooms were always going to be paid by the beach fees. Whenever we raise the beach fees, we say, this money is going to go towards bathrooms, new bathrooms.
And I have to say that the work that's being done now is coming out of the beach utility. So I just, I just want that to be clear. It is coming out of the beach utility. And I agree with you on the beach tractor. It's obviously a beach tractor. It says it right here. It should be in the beach utility. But we just heard, you know, from the CFO, I think, is this a major change to take the writing out of CF, of a beach tractor?
Not necessarily. I believe we'd have to re-advertise, though.
You would have to re-advertise for that?
Yeah.
And that's because we are actually saying, this is what we can purchase with it. So obviously, what we're, you know, when you have to re-advertise, which is what, a couple hundred dollars, to follow the protocol, which is what we're setting forth now, that if you're going to say you're going to buy something with this money, then that's where it should be held accountable.
It doesn't negate the fact that it's still needed and necessary. You're just saying that the categorization needs to be clarified.
I just don't think you should be putting in a beach tractor when you're doing capital equipment. That's, I mean, how do we know, I mean, I don't know that you're not going to buy a beach tractor towards the end of the year, and it's going to come out of this fund. You just, you just approved it, so everything says you can do it.
Well, it's for second reading, so I think that's why we're having the discussion. But the fact, the fact of the matter is, we need a beach tractor. So we could remove it from this area, but still, if it's $600,000, it's still going to have to be...
Bonded underneath the beach utility.
Under the beach utility.
Which is what we've done in the past. Last year, we only bonded for...
And by the way, I just made that number up, so.
$445,000 is all we budgeted for last year, for the beach utility. So I don't know how much it is either.
Right.
You know, but, you know, that's the rules when we come down to a beach utility. It has to be self-liquidating. And we've been trying to make this utility even larger, where if the police respond to the beach, then that money should be coming out of that beach utility to pay for the police. I mean, you're familiar with that, Lorraine, when we were talking about that with...
Right. No, no, I think we're all familiar. I mean, that is the semantics of taking things and making it more of a cause center basis than it's been. than it's been done in the past. You know, that is some of the mechanics that, you know, Kevin's working through, because there's a set of books that the state requires. But, you know, when you're on, you're looking at things differently, it is, it's more of a cost basis. So I understand what you're saying. I think I'm, I'm just trying to get to the fact that it's, will not negate that it's somewhere, we still may need a beach tractor, and it's still going to have to be capitalized and funded. It just may be listed as a different category on this.
But no, it shouldn't be listed here, right? It should not be listed in this, in this bond.
In this document, but in another document.
Because this is for capital.
Right.
It's not coming out of a beach utility. So it should be a whole separate bond, is my point. And also, Gurnee Street Restrooms. You just made a point that the restrooms now, the improvements, are being paid by the beach utility. Well, why won't a new bathroom be paid by the beach utility?
It will be.
They would be, yeah. Again, this is just a wording issue.
It's not a wording issue. This is a document, this is a legal document.
Like I said, in Section 3, it's just suggestions of what the capital can be applied to. It's not requiring us to apply capital to any of these items.
But we cannot, we're not going to be able to bond for it, right? A restroom, I can understand bonding for a restroom, it's a large amount of money, usually. More so than bonding for tactical defense equipment that only lasts five years. I'm assuming a bathroom's going to last a lot longer than, you know, stuff that's for five years. And I would rather us see us use money out of the budget for this equipment instead of bonding for something that only lasts five years. And actually, bonding underneath the beach utility for a bathroom that's going to last more than, you know, five years, that's going to cost more than, you know, $46,000 that we're throwing in there for tactical equipment.
So, Kevin, the semantics, I understand what you're saying. This is not necessarily the absolute list, it is a general list. And I understand what Stacy's saying, that she's concerned. If it's in there, it implies that it will be used for that purpose. Our holdup here, not holdup, the way to go about this is for us to re-advertise and provide a more streamlined list that excludes those things that might be considered to be belonging in either tourism or beach utility.
But I think we also, but I think there should be another bond for beach.
Hold on, okay. We're not doing a question and answer session. If you have a question, you can lay it out, but we're not going to keep going back and forth.
Well, I thought that's what public comment was, for ordinances. It's not public comment at the end, this is part of the ordinance, which I thought there was more give and take at that point.
Okay. Let me ask the CFO a direct question, and we'll see if we can move on here. You're getting direction from council, it sounds to me, and anybody who disagrees with that, please feel free to make your voices heard, that we do not want to see the tractor purchased out of the beach utility.
Correct.
And we do not want to see the bathroom funded out, I'm sorry, we, we want to see the tractor funded out of the beach utility.
Correct.
And we want to see the bathroom funded out of the beach utility. Do you hear that loud and clear?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a bond ordinance in front of us that has very important issues that we need to take care of, some of them we need to get moving on. It's time sensitive. And here, let me just say this as an invitation to any public comment. If you feel very strongly about something on the agenda, let us know. We will, we will change it before we get to the meeting, and we kind of like, either have to pass it or not. If you feel very strongly about something where the language is incorrect, or you want to see something changed, let us know.
I brought this up at the first reading, just so you're aware. I did bring this up at the first reading, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, I brought it up at the first reading, that there should be a beach utility bond that should be done.
And there, and there will be a beach utility bond. There will be.
Oh, well, that was my only thing, that it should be broken out. If we're going to be doing these, it should be underneath the beach utility bond.
Do you feel confident, confident in us saying, Stacy, that we will make sure and ensure that it, those both are taken out?
Look, it's not what I feel comfortable.
Well, I do, I think as a person who's speaking as a public representative, you've brought the issue up, you did bring it up at the last meeting. I think that we have the obligation to respond to your request. I don't know what else we can do at this point, this is the second reading, there are some time sensitive things in here. I'd like to make, make you feel comfortable on the others in the room and other people watching this, that, you know, we will hold true to what we're saying here tonight.
See, I don't think it should be passed, because this is a written document, and this is what stayed in there. Technically, you can. There's nothing stopping you from saying that, because you're passing it underneath that.
Mr. Gillen-Schwarz, is there any, anything that we can do from a revision?
Additional context that I can add here?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks.
The local bond law does not require the type of specificity that we're talking about. And the bond ordinance that's before council reflects, you know, language like including but not limited to. And that's consistent with the local bond law, which requires stating in brief and general terms sufficient for reasonable identification, the purpose or purposes for which the obligations are to be issued. So I'm, I'm comfortable that we don't need to dive, the, the bond ordinance itself provides a reasonable ballpark of these types of items. And what I'm hearing is very specific direction based on public comment about what we want to do from a, you know, financial perspective in terms of expenditures and how that should be allocated. And from what I can tell at this table, that message has been received. It'll probably be reflected in the minutes.
Are we able to strike beach tractor and Gurnee Street Restrooms from this? I just, I'm just asking from a matter of process? Or is that, you know, overstepping? I don't know if it's an option, I'm just asking.
All right.
Since, you know, it's just a list, you know, and it's not necessarily, you know, finite.
Can't we, can't we live with this going forward the way it is? Because there's a cost involved, there's timing involved. And to be honest with you, you want to be able to look at the beach utility, I understand, accurately. It should be reflected in the financials, and it won't be because of what we're doing here. However, the way most corporations handle that is they make footnotes, they, there are notations made when looking at the financials, at the actual performance, whatever, end of year. Can we not do that and just make sure that the beach utility has a footnote that says we weren't, we didn't have this much, or at least the capital came from, should have come from this utility, even though it came from the general fund?
Even when we put it into the accounting system, it wouldn't have this detail on it noting that anything is for beach. And like I said, since these are just guidelines, all of this capital would only be for general capital. Nothing is going towards beach, it's just a wording issue in the ordinance.
So all this money is coming from the capital fund?
Just for general capital.
Right. So it's not, it's not coming from the beach.
Correct.
Okay, so I, I would just like this reflected in the minutes, and that, and that is, I think the consensus at the, at the table is, the council would like to see that the beach tractor and the Gurnee Street bathrooms be done through a bond through the beach utility, or frankly, through the beach utility. It doesn't have to be a bond, but through the beach utility. And just, and that's period, that's, that's it, for the minutes. But I would just say, in just in general, to look at the numbers in the beach utility, and you can see that this council has been pushing more and more into the beach utility. So all I'm saying is, whatever's on this paper, look at what council's been doing. We've been pushing things into the beach utility over the last two years that have really pushed it up, basically. Okay, any other public comment on this ordinance? No public comment? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion based on the statement that Mayor Mullick just made.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any questions or comments, council? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
We have 502, 2023, an ordinance amending Section 81 of the Cape May City Code regarding the Police Department with a public hearing, mayor.
Anyone wishing to speak on this ordinance? This is an ordinance on the Police Department, 502. Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments, council? Roll call.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
We have 503, 2023, an ordinance amending the section of the city code regarding prohibited acts on the boardwalk, promenade, and beaches with a public hearing.
Anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 503? Seeing none, we can close public comment. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any questions or comments, council? Roll call.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
And next, we have the public portion on the resolutions only, mayor. If anybody wishing to comment on the resolutions listed on the agenda, you could come to the microphone and give your name and number for the, for the record, please.
Hello. My name is Kelly Carter-Courier, and I live at 398 Congress Street. I was here last year around the same time, and I was the one that said I prayed for rain every night between 7:00 and 9:00, so that a certain restaurant, bar slash whatever, would not wake me up at 10:00 o'clock or 10:30 at night with their loud music playing outside. And this has been going on for four years now, and they're not hiding it this year. I have taken pictures, because they'll probably take it off their Facebook and their website, but I can look forward now to loud music past 10:00 until September 30th of 2023. And I have the license conditions here for the second year in a row. And I'm talking about Elaine's, and I don't know who owns it, I don't have any, you know, I'm not like some of you that are married to certain people or know certain cops and all that stuff. I'm not, I'm not trying to get anyone in trouble, but for the past four years, I've been told to close my windows, which I have, but I can still hear it. I've been told to, oh, well, you know, maybe you weren't there as long as they've been there, whatever, but I've had it. Last year, again, my husband, after 10:00, went down there, called the police, the police finally showed up, and they didn't even know about the ordinance. So that's pretty sad. The year before that, they said, oh, we'll talk to them. Well, you know what? Guess what? Nothing. Last year, I didn't say the name, everybody knew who I was talking about, but I just feel like I shouldn't have to get out of bed at 10:00 after I've been in bed, sleeping, trying to sleep, and call the police, and wait for the police, and then nothing happens. I've gone to other bars in the past, and their music stops, their outside music stops at 9:00. And I've tried as a, you know, a person that's had a few drinks, and said, oh, come on, just a few more. And they, no, 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 we're going to go inside, we're closing our doors. The music, this year, it doesn't say anything about amplified music, but last year it did. And, and I don't even live close to Elaine's, I live several blocks away, okay? I can't even imagine what it sounds like when you're there really close. It says no amplified music, it tells about the code, everybody knows what's going on. And it's on their website, their Facebook page, Twitter, I think, I don't know what Twitter is. They list the music up until 10:00, it never stops at 10:00. The other nights are 9:00, and it doesn't stop at 9:00, it doesn't stop at 9:30. I feel, as a taxpayer, that whoever's supposed to enforce this needs to enforce this. I am not the only person in Cape May that feels this way. And if it was Rusty Nail, or if it was another, the Henry's or whatever else people are playing music, if it was them, I'd be here about them. I would. Again, it's not about Elaine's, it's just, that's the one I hear. I do hear Rusty Nail once in a while, but at 9:00, I don't hear it. And I have to put up with that? Oh, okay, that's fine. And, and it's, I'm talking about this, but, you know, it's about noise in general in Cape May, because I've got about seven big house projects within earshot of my house. So six days a week, I listen to pounding and, you know, trash trucks coming at 7:00 in the morning, and people starting at 7:30, and all this stuff. And we've complained, and nothing gets done. And I just want to say, my family's been in the same, same, on the same lot since 1953. So it's not like, you know, we bought this house five years ago, and, or three years ago, and, you know, whatever. I'm just asking for, if you're going to give them their license, or anybody their license, liquor license especially, please make them follow the rules. They're there for a reason. And I know she's put up, or they've put up, or whoever's put up, you know, walls and bars, and they've been taken down eventually and all that. I mean, I know all the stuff that's going on, and it just needs to be told, you know, because, you know, I know there's other businesses, you know, I have friends that live in other parts of Cape May, and they're dealing with the same issues. And I love being outside, and I love listening to music outside, and I love eating outside, and so I don't want that to stop, but I just want it to be followed. There's a reason for, for what's, you know, what's going on. I think I said everything. Yeah, so.
Excuse me, mayor, it has been five minutes.
I think we're sympathetic, and I'd just say this, that we just received a letter, not from you, from other neighbors. So I think we hear you loud and, loud and clear.
And I think many people would agree, 9:00 is a sufficient amount of time.
I mean, I wish it was earlier, but you know what?
Yeah, yeah. And, and the enforcement issue needs to be discussed, and unfortunately, Chief Faschal is not here tonight, but...
And let, let the younger cops, because that was a young kid, it was probably, I know probably who it was, but, you know, they, they were like, they had no clue, you know?
Yeah, well, I think it's something, since it is associated with the approval of their liquor license for all of these businesses, then it's contingent upon us to be responsible to make sure that he passes that information along to his team. I mean, it's not a...
Well, and they can look, I mean, I have photo, I've, I've taken photos of, I mean, right now, it says 10:00, you know? I have, I have the list till September 30th. I mean, it's advertised, I mean, at least some people are smart, and they put music, but they don't say a time, they just, you know what I mean? Which, anyway.
The city manager isn't here this evening, nor is the chief, so I apologize.
I'll have to come back.
Council doesn't have the authority to enforce code, okay?
Okay.
But I can tell you, I'm sure all of us agree, that we want to see it enforced. And as I said before, we, we just received another letter that was not from you, saying exactly the same thing. So we, we will forward that to the city manager and to the police chief with our recommendation that they make sure that this is enforced.
And if it's not enforced, should I go above this? Like, I don't know, the liquor commission or something? I don't know.
The first thing to do is to call the police, as you've done, and I understand that.
Okay.
If you, and I'm talking the night of, the next morning, if you feel like it wasn't enforced, email me right away.
Okay.
And I will, I will personally work on it myself.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Same, same issue? Okay. Note, can we note that for the minutes?
Is there a name, at least?
Would you, Anita, would you just give us your name and ju...
Name and address, and then I will have you echoing your comments.
We can, we can write ditto, but that's fine.
Thank you.
Anita Novino, 351 Congress Street.
And you agree with those comments?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
They need to be enforced.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the resolutions?
Stacy Shan, 928 Columbia Avenue. Just for the payment of bills, I just want to make sure it's made aware, multi-temps bill, which is our HVAC person, $11,000 for the month of April. multi-temps bill, which is our HVAC person, $11,000 for the month of April. Again, the bills keep racking up for them. At that point, we, you know.
That's the HVAC systems.
Exactly, and it should have been replaced years ago. And then my next question is Resolution 16406. Is it possible to read that resolution, so if you didn't get a copy of that?
Yes, yes. Any other public comment? Let's pull 164 just so you, remind me if you want, please. Okay, seeing no other public comment, we can close public comment. City clerk?
Yes. Would counsel like to remove anything from the consent agenda this evening?
Yes, could, I'm sorry, could we remove 164 just for the reading of that? And I'm sorry, deputy mayor, go ahead.
Can I remove 160 as well?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, on the consent agenda this evening, we have 15706, 2023, Resolution authorizing the city of Cape May to appoint Honorable Raymond A. Batten retired as hearing officer for a pending disciplinary matter. 15806, 2023, Resolution authorizing change order number one to contract for reconstruction of Pennsylvania Avenue Phase Five.
City clerk, I apologize. Could you, could we also remove 159?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I apologize. Anything else?
That was it, I'm sorry.
No, all good. So that was 158, was Pennsylvania Avenue Phase Five. 16106, 2023, Resolution authorizing execution of U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development environmental review record relating to the Cape May Housing Authority. 16206, 2023, Resolution for the payment of bills. And 16306, 2023, a resolution authorizing the city to award a contract to Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Cooperative vendor Groff Tractor Mid-Atlantic LLC for caseload or forks, side bucket, and bucket for the city of Cape May in the amount not to exceed $50,725.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
So we have 15906, 2023, Resolution approving alcoholic beverage club license renewals for the 2023 to 2024 licensed year.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
So.
You can explain.
Yeah, I really should have asked to have this pulled just for me because I'm a board member of the Corinthian Yacht Club as well as the CFO there, so. Anyhow, I have to abstain.
Okay. Do we have any other members of any other clubs listed? Okay. We set for roll call, counsel? Councilmember Yeager?
Abstain.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
And 16006, 2023, Resolution approving alcoholic beverage license renewals for the 2023 to 2024 licensed year.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I pulled this off the agenda, mayor, actually for two reasons. The first one, if we take a look at Carney's Inc., the conditions of their liquor licenses, I think it's on page. It's a second page.
Starts on one, yeah.
Yeah, and then it goes to the second. I think it's like the fifth line down where it speaks specifically of the owner. I'd like to remove that and possibly put owner-manager. I don't like to have any mention of individual owners within this with.
Well, because it could change, too.
It could change. That's the first thing. And the second thing, you know, in light of what was discussed here today as far as Elaine's, looking at, there's on here as well, looking at their their conditions of their license, there have been changes on that site, and is that something we need to consider as well?
Can I ask the solicitor to answer that? Do you want to have that asked again? Is, in light of changes on the site, should you evaluate the conditions that you're going to place on the license? I think counsel certainly has the authority to do that. These are approved on an annual basis, so. And that would include the thought that perhaps the site underwent some changes.
And the only reason I'm bringing it up is because there's that huge addition on the side, and in here it states.
Are we speaking of Carney's?
No.
No, you're just speaking of.
I switched.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought, and I'm going in the same direction you are.
I switched, okay. It states that live or recorded, no alcoholic beverages are to be sold or served in any of the parking lot areas. And that no bars, tables, chairs, stage, or other area for playing of live or recorded music are permitted in the parking lot areas without city council approval. Now, that parking lot area just included a large addition of that deck. So I'm wondering, is that something we want to consider backing into a residential area? I don't know.
Well, and it's also, it sort of sits between the end of that addition and another building that is a boutique that is used by pedestrians for parking and other. I mean, my question, I think, in similar vein is, these are conditions that are set forth for these licenses. And it says that music is to stop at 9 o'clock, and it has the timeframes. And we've heard, you know, by public comment, that, you know, there's situations in which that does not occur, and we need to speak with the city manager and the police chief about it. But what is counsel's responsibility in, one, approving this and making sure that these actions, that these activities are adhered to? Because I kind of feel, I heard what Mayor Mullick said, you know, we don't enforce code, but we're approving this based on the fact that they're going to adhere to it. So this is a personal question for me. So I'm really, I'm having a little bit of a conflict in saying, I'm allowing a liquor license to be approved for a business. I'm turning the authority and the responsibility over of ensuring that they adhere to it, but we're authorizing it, so, and these are the conditions under which it's authorized. So it's sort of a personal dilemma for me.
Yeah, I, just approving the liquor license doesn't free any liquor license holder up from the conditions.
Okay.
So I do see this, one, principally as an enforcement issue.
Okay.
Because, and for this reason, I think this 9:00 p.m. limitation for outdoor music is all over this.
It's pretty clear.
It's in every, it's not just in this one. It's in every license. And that type of rule is non-discriminatory. It's across the board. And that is, that impacts every business on this list. So I see that principally as an enforcement issue, and it can be enforced. But maybe, you know, it's a discussion with, you know, the city administration about.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I, yes, I do feel that that is necessary, the other piece. Is this also applicable to private residents, the 9 o'clock? I'm just from a curiosity standpoint.
This is not a noise ordinance, so this is a condition attached to.
But live music at a private residence, would it be 9 o'clock? I'm just curious.
Well, the general noise ordinance is actually 10:00 p.m. You know, but the, this is more, it's narrower than that.
Right.
And the more specific regulations going to apply in this case, because this is a, it's part of the privilege of holding a liquor license that's renewed on an annual basis is sometimes the city and other municipalities wants to impose, you know, limitations for health, safety, and general welfare. So I, my humble opinion is we have a across-the-board limitation that is reflected in here, and that may just be, you know, a discussion with, on the enforcement side.
I think it's necessary, and I guess, again, go back to just my comment that I'm feeling a little conflicted about giving an approval. But, you know, I understand the need to do it from the business standpoint. I just really want to make sure that as a council member, that these conditions are adhered to. I mean, there's, that's only fair to the other businesses, and it's only fair to the public, and it's only fair to our residents, so that's my statement.
And my question is, is are they reminded of these conditions each year when we tell them the license is ready for you to pick up?
I think the clerk can answer that.
They are. They get a copy of it, and I do believe, I'm not, don't quote me on this. I do believe that the police hold a meeting with many, if not all, of the liquor licensees annually. So I know the manager isn't here. I have no problem following up with management and with Chief Faschal. You know, I'm sure they're going to go back and watch this and understand everyone's concerns and address them appropriately. But yes, every licensee does get a copy of this. They are well aware.
I think this year in particular, and maybe it's happened years past, too, but it certainly would be good to include, you know, when presenting the license to a specific business that we have, that the neighborhood has a problem with, they should understand that we've had public comment here and that everybody's watching whether or not they're violating.
Erin, you're saying, are they given this actual document, are they given anything that requires them to attest that they acknowledge, have read it, just similar to what we've just done with Resolution 164? Because I would be happy to work on something that requires them as the owner to attest.
Well, they're.
I know it doesn't, sometimes it doesn't mean anything, but sometimes getting someone to have to sign and acknowledge, it's another legal document to ensure.
I will say that I don't think any of the liquor license holders have to, like, formally acknowledge that for it to be effective. It's effective once counsel approves it, and everybody's presumed to be on notice of that if they operate with the license.
Okay.
I usually email them all a copy of this. And then they come and pick up their physical license from me. I have them sign their actual license, a copy that I keep to show that they did indeed pick it up in case there's a question. They get it. They are well aware that they have these rules. I have no problem putting that in my email to the licensees, saying like, this discussion was held by counsel. Please pay extra attention to the noise portion of this stating, blah, blah, blah. Like, I can draft something to go along with that email to emphasize what is already in here.
That it's a condition of their license.
Absolutely, absolutely. And then ultimately, it does then become an enforcement issue.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll point out, too, that we have noise nuisance provisions in our code. And I think by adopting this annually for multiple years, even before I was here, I mean, this is, these conditions have been almost like in stone tablets at this point, the way that this document is read. And as a policy matter, I read that as city council, this administration, and previous administrations determining as a policy matter that after a certain hour for commercial properties, it's a nuisance to be doing that type of activity after 9 o'clock. So it's also kind of read into our ordinances as well. So this is a liquor license condition. It would be enforced through that mechanism, but it can also be, you know, a code thing, too.
Okay.
So just kind of going back on my question, if you don't mind. Because I don't know if the intent of what was written in here originally, not having music, and of course, during COVID, things were, things changed. Was it on that side of the building where you needed to nestle the, you know, the music in that small area where it's not, you know, amplified into a residential neighborhood? I don't know if that was the original intent of this, and now with the changes on the site, I don't know if that's something that we look at.
I think that they do it in both places.
See, and I haven't been biased to know if they do.
They have the area in the front.
And then there's the large.
And then there's the large area on the side, so.
Can I just, on this discussion, and this is a question for our city clerk, this is not the last batch of liquor licenses. Is that correct?
It is not, so if you would like to potentially remove one for further inspection or even table, I'd hate to hold up all of them. But yeah, there'll be another batch on the next meeting as well.
So in other words, you know, if there are some questions about this, you could potentially table one of these for follow-up at the next meeting.
Absolutely.
There's already, there's going to be another batch.
Excuse me, yes, and just, these do expire at the end of the month, so long as we potentially take action on them prior to that.
Who do we have do that?
Just remove it from here?
No. Who do we have review the issue as to whether or not they're occupying a parking lot? Or the intention, I'm not, are you saying that we're doing that?
Yeah, that would be, that would be, yeah, us.
Let me just understand what the, what the point is. I mean, we, can you go back to the sentence that you're talking about? Do you mind?
Sure.
I'm just trying.
Yeah, that's fine. And again, I'm thinking that that's the intent of the way that this was originally written. It says, "No alcoholic beverages are to be sold or served in any of the parking lot areas," and that "no bar, tables, chairs, stage, or other area for playing of live or recorded music are permitted in the parking lot areas without city council approval."
Well, I think the addition is attached to the building. You're, I get what you're saying.
Right.
It's right there close to the parking lot, but the addition is attached to the building. So I guess I'm trying to, what would we really be looking at?
I guess your question.
Or else just strike that language, or?
Well, maybe get clarification from Elaine's to see if they are planning on live music there. Is that an issue? We did receive a letter from a public member. We've now had, you know, additional comments here.
Right.
You know, I think we need to do our homework a little bit better.
Okay.
That's.
And maybe, and maybe you want to add some additional language or delete some of it?
We could.
Right.
We could, but I don't think I'm ready to.
Okay.
We could stipulate for that property in particular where.
What's going on, what they're planning, yeah.
Only till 9 o'clock.
My only point about that.
Equivocation.
I'm sorry, was to indicate that if you were to, if you want to flush out some of these questions, you know, before the next meeting, and you don't feel like you have to do all this at the table right now, get some questions answered, maybe have a discussion with the property owner through the city manager's office, and that would still leave us the next meeting before the July 1 deadline, too. So it's not putting the property owner in any jeopardy either. We still have other licenses that we plan to include.
Okay, so then do I have a motion to amend this resolution?
I'll make the motion.
And?
It would be amended to exclude, I guess, is it license number, sorry.
Yes.
0502, 32021005 for follow-up and consideration.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Can we also amend or remove?
Go ahead.
Joe Carney, put owner-manager on there as well?
Let's, should we do that separately? Because we're not removing.
You can just do one motion. The motion would include removing the owner's name and indicating owner/manager in place in the Carney's license. And then the second part of that motion would be to table the Finnick Corp. license.
Okay with that? Okay, so I have a motion to amend. Did I get, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from deputy mayor. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes. Now, do I have a motion on the amended resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes. I think we have 164 left.
16406, 2023.
This was pulled, I think, to allow us to read 164. And I want to first compliment, you want to do it? First compliment Maureen McDade for working on this, and I think at the request of several people, but really giving a format and a reminder to all of our licensed contractors here in town.
Yeah, so, and actually, Deputy Mayor Baldwin and I worked on this together at the request of Mr. Jules Roush, 1010. So this resolution is approving a form of acknowledgement of responsibilities for construction activities for use by the construction office. It's, whereas the city of Cape May code provides numerous regulations pertaining to construction activities for the benefit of the public health, safety, and general welfare. And whereas the city council deems it is in the best interest of the city to provide for the distribution and acknowledgement of a checklist, including a summary of code sections relevant to construction activities for the benefit of contractors, residents, developers, and homeowners. The form is attached here and to as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference, and it'll therefore be resolved by the city of Cape May, county of Cape May, state of New Jersey. The resettled paragraphs are hereby incorporated into this resolution as is set forth at length. City council hereby approves of the acknowledgement of responsibilities for construction activities form attached here and to as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. The city manager and all appropriate city officials are hereby authorized and directed to take any and all actions necessary to effectuate the purposes therein to and to implement the form as part of the construction office permitting process. I, Erin C. Burke, city of Cape May, of the city of Cape May, of the county of Cape May, of the state of New Jersey, do hereby certify the foregoing as a correct and true original resolution adopted by the city council of the city of Cape May at a meeting held on June 7.
Hopefully.
Yes, and then attached to this is a two-page document. And just, it requires a completion by a contractor or homeowner coming in and submitting an application to the construction or zoning office. It has a checklist of really some of the highlights of things that they should just be, should already be aware of, but we're reinforcing by and acknowledging. And it's all currently within our city ordinances or in our code book. But we felt that this was a way to highlight this information and ensure that they're checking this off. A copy of it will be kept with the application and a copy provided to the contractor. With the passing of this resolution this evening, this will go into effect immediately for all new applications that would be submitted to the construction and zoning. for all new applications that would be submitted to the construction and zoning office. So Stacy, does that answer it? Any questions?
So just to highlight, A, first off, nice job, both deputy mayor and councilwoman McDade. And again, all it is really is a checklist of existing code. It doesn't change any code. It just highlights them. And I think it's effective and just totally makes sense for people to just have these kind of reminders of, hey, this is how we function in the city.
And I also think it's good for homeowners, if you're filling out an application, to also be aware because, you know, some of the information in the code book, it's hard to research and understand. So it's a, it's a good form.
And may not be as familiar as some of the contractors.
No, exactly. Yeah, so.
Any questions or comments, council? Do we have, I'm sorry, do we have a motion?
No.
Can I have a motion on this resolution 164?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
You should.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
Any old business, council?
Any old business, council? No? Any new business, city solicitor?
Nothing tonight, mayor, thank you.
City clerk?
Nothing tonight, mayor.
Okay. Deputy mayor?
Just one quick thing. The beach safety committee meeting in conjunction with the lifeguard and first responders, we're gonna have an open house at headquarters on June the 24th. There's gonna be lifeguard demonstrations there. First responders are gonna be there. It's an open house. Come meet your lifeguards, meet your first responders.
That's cool. Very cool.
Okay, and that's all I have, mayor.
And just to add to that, the lifeguards were at the elementary school. Of course, my kids came home with some of the stickers, but with the logo had actually the QR code.
Yep.
Which goes directly to safety videos. And it's just, it's cool.
We're working on the safety videos.
Yeah.
And they're doing the curriculum in the schools, which is wonderful now, beach safety. So a lot of good things.
Very nice.
Coming out of that committee.
Councilmember McDade?
The only thing is I did, was following up with Casey and the representatives from the jitney to see how the first weekend went. So they had some good feedback. I think we're gonna see how the ridership and the usage of the buses, the jitneys, are in different areas of the city. Seems that Beach Avenue is a high-traffic area on a Saturday, and so there may need to be some adjustments, but I think all of that would be welcomed by the people who are using it. Most of the people, they said, who were using it were very familiar with it and had used it before, so that was really great. And we are working on just trying to, some of the signs that are on there now are larger and more visible. And so, you know, we were just working on that. So we're, I've told them I'm gonna follow up in a couple of weeks and get the numbers right before we get to the changeover for the seven-day timeframe and understand where we are with that and see how things are going, so.
Already the signs that I saw are a nice change. I saw them on the side of it. And I know you worked on that, so that's nice. Thank you.
I'm trying to get them very large.
Councilmember Yeager?
Nothing new for me.
Okay, I gave it all away in the beginning of the meeting, so the only thing I will say is congratulations to the training center, Coast Guard Training Center on Thursday is celebrating 75 years. So congratulations to them. And we'll open it up for public comment at this time. Anyone wishing to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address.
Stacy Shan, 928 Columbia Avenue. I just have one quick comment. The volunteer fire department is in Cape May. The council during the bills gave them a nice sum of money. Why I'm bringing this up is that we have to remember that it's a volunteer and a paid fire department to go after grants. At one of the meetings, I think it was Lou Blasko, said, "We're not a volunteer fire company," but we are. We're a combination of volunteers and paid, so we should be entitled to certain grants towards that new firehouse. My next one has to do with the wall at Wilmington and the beach. In 2021, there's a letter sent out to the neighborhood. The neighbors are letting them know about that. That's been a couple of years. I think that we should probably send, or the council should probably send out another letter to the neighbors, letting them know about this wall, because properties have sold and rather people know about it before it starts being built. Wilmington and the beach is the Army Corps one. That's always at the end. But the, my other question has to do with the extension of the promenade from Madison on. Is that gonna be underneath the beach utility or capital?
That would not fit under the beach utility, unfortunately. Our beach tags would probably be a hundred-plus dollars each. But yeah, so to answer your question, it'd be capital, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And then my other, that, or the resolution just passed, 164, it'd be nice if maybe the police officers got a copy of that too, so that they could be.
They, it was already shared with, I'm sorry, it was already shared with code enforcement while we were developing it. So the chief has it and code enforcement has it. And now that we've passed the resolution, I will make sure that the chief forwards that to all of his command staff and his patrol officers, so they're aware, yes. Because oftentimes after hours, they are the ones that are being called.
Right, especially on weekends.
Exactly, yeah.
My next statement has to do with the bathrooms. I think it's on Philadelphia, the permanent building that's on the beach. It was, I had brought it up a couple of times, that we could be putting changing rooms that are PVC that are temporary behind them, so that it would free up the bathroom stalls. A lot of the complaints there that people had that use that bathroom down there are that people are changing inside the restroom, causing the line to get backed up outside. And we had, I had made that suggestion a number of years ago, that they can be taken down, so they're just temporary shower stalls out back that people can use as a changing room. And that was it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comment this evening? Anita?
Anita Novino, 351 Congress Street. I just would like to make a suggestion, and that is that you consider not having construction on Saturdays. In season. Okay.
Mr. Solicitor, are you familiar with what exists as of now?
Yes.
Specifically, are you talking?
Well, it's nine to three on Saturday.
Nine to three, okay.
And it really shouldn't be at all on Saturday. And in season.
What would you consider in season? Just to get your opinion.
After Memorial Day.
Okay, yeah.
Have a summertime moratorium on Saturday construction is what you're saying.
That would work for me.
Okay. That's a good suggestion. I think we'll consider it for sure.
And also I would just like to comment on the fact that I'm unaware of all of this in terms of people come in for licenses to construct in Cape May. I don't know if there's a period of time, a limitation, for their putting that house up or not. I think there should be, okay?
You're talking about construction phase?
Tear everything up, drive construction trucks in, leave them there, go on vacation.
Right.
And they could sit there the entire summer. And then all the neighbors get to look at that all summer long.
Understood. Yep, yep.
I mean, you know, I don't know how tight the restrictions are, but I would like to suggest that somebody look at them, because maybe they could be improved.
Okay.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Burton Novino, 351 Congress Street. A couple of weekends ago, my wife and I went up to Ocean City and attended a meeting about the windmills. And in speaking to a couple of the organizers, and we told them we were from Cape May, they said they hadn't heard a thing from Cape May. And I understand ten of the local mayors have signed some type of support for Ocean City. And I was wondering where Cape May stands and where you stand, Mr. Mayor. And it's almost too late now that Murphy has jammed this down the throat. We have no vote. None of the residents seem to have been able to vote on it, but I'm probably not gonna see it in my lifetime, but it would be a shame that the children growing up are gonna sit on the beach and look out and see windmills that are gonna cost us a lot of money. And the companies that are doing it are all now foreign-owned. The local or the companies that were in this country have backed out over in Boston. And I understand in Jersey, the percentage has been shifted totally to the foreign construction. And I think it's a tragedy, and I think it should be, I think we should do something or try to at least do something, if it's not too late, to try to put at least a halt or a moratorium on what's going on.
So just to answer your question directly, I know you didn't speak to Mayor Gillian, because I've spoken to him multiple times, and have definitely supported their issue of the home rule that they are in the lawsuit in right now, which I think was crazy, to kind of push things through, through what should have been approved by Ocean City. Actually, Cape May was probably maybe the first city to ask for a moratorium. We all voted unanimously to ask for a moratorium. So we did that, I think, back in February, pretty, pretty early on. Oh, yeah.
It was at a meeting. It was, it was February 7th, I think. There was a, it was a resolution on the agenda for that.
Yep.
We asked for a moratorium.
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
I know, I've brought it up, but it seems a shame that all the cities can't get together and try to do something. No legally, if you put a hold, I know they just, the local courts can't, I mean, put the quietly lines through the city.
Right.
Somehow it should be a stop.
We can talk about that. Any other public comment? Trish?
Trish Tarnavy, 719, 721 Franklin Street. I just wanted to get a little update on, you know, what is gonna be going on for the summer, as the lady has suggested that we are now into the season, which is Memorial Day. And I think I remember you saying that we weren't gonna have construction start at seven o'clock, which usually starts around 6:45 in the morning. But now that we are into the season, I think you did pass some resolution going back, that we're now gonna have it start at eight o'clock because of the summer.
Right.
So I think we are in summer, if I'm not mistaken. So I don't think your workers know that, so perhaps maybe next week you can let them start at eight o'clock.
Okay.
All right. I mean, it's early and it's a problem, but you know, I'm going with it. What can I do?
We will definitely, I will personally get to the workers, make sure they're not starting before 8:00 AM.
And I just wanted to ask you about the updates quickly. I saw there were people working on the church today, so is that gonna be the next project? Have you gotten the bids yet?
I think, I actually was unaware if they were at the church today. I think they had a couple of closeout items on phase one.
Okay, they were windows, so.
Window, okay, that's exactly, okay, then that is what that was. So the last thing they had to finish was one custom window that they had in the back of the church. I guess, I think that's what you're talking about. So they had been waiting for one custom window to come in for months. Apparently that came in and they were installing it. So they're finished with phase one, probably effective today. I mean, even though the last thing was only that window for the last couple of months. Phase two would be, we did receive, I think, $350,000 grant from the county. And so phase two would have to be bid out, but they're working on those as we speak, hopefully to have for this summer, the bidding. That would, I'm only estimating right now, but that would probably mean any construction would have, would most likely be starting after Labor Day.
Okay, all right. And the firehouse is going to, is there any kind of a set date for that yet?
Mid-July, I think.
Mid-July.
Is substantial completion, so hopefully coming up pretty, pretty soon.
Well, I'm aware of the library. I mean, they do, I do talk to the library supervisors almost on a daily basis, and they have taken, I mean, they aren't finished with their grinding, which is really good, because, you know, I did have to have my porch done, which I was going to have done in April, but because of their grinding, I could not have that done. And then, of course, when I wanted to have it done, my contractors couldn't do it. So that put me on my hands and knees, sanding my porch, my mahogany porch and the back porch, which is, you know, but I had to do that within this last week, because now I have tenants coming in. So I'm telling you, it's a mess. Now, I would like to ask you about the house next door to me. Do you know anything about that? Or is there anything in the works? Or do you think you're gonna tear it down?
I've said it publicly that I think the tower should be torn down. I'd like to see it torn down. And really, I'm not pushing the issue, because CCA needs a home until the library is complete. The library is supposed to be complete at, well, they're saying sometime between Thanksgiving and Christmas, essentially. So once that's complete and the CCA has a new home, that's something that we need to visit as a city.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, like, everything, because I just didn't want something to happen and I wasn't aware that, you know, the bulldozers were coming in and, you know.
Oh, no, no. We would absolutely give you plenty of notice on that. It would, and it'd have to go before HPC, so there's gonna be some public notice for that, for sure.
I'm just hoping that something doesn't happen like next season in the middle of the summer. I'm hoping that these projects, I mean, that would, I don't know what kind of a project it's gonna be. I have no clue. I don't even know what you have in your mind or what you're thinking about. So whatever's gonna happen, I would really like to be informed about it.
Absolutely.
All right.
Yep.
And that's about all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say one more thing really quickly. I want to give a shout out to the public works people. As you know, there was a crack in the water line out front of my house in addition to everything else that, you know, goes on there. And they were very responsive. And in the crack, they also found one in the middle of the street too. So they came and they fixed it, and it was all done within like a 24-hour period. So the public works people that you have are just fabulous people, because they're always right there, so.
Thank you.
I want to give a shout out to them.
Thank you.
Kelly Carter-Courier, 398 Congress Street. I must have got worried.
I just want to say thank you guys for letting us come up and complain and stuff, because I know. I, I'm a retired teacher, so I know how that can be, and I wouldn't want to do what you guys do. I mean, I've had many people try to get me on boards and stuff, and I'm like, no way. So I really do appreciate it.
Thank you, Kelly. Anyone else? Anita?
Ms. Novino, I'm sorry. Ms. Novino, one second.
Anita Novino, 351 Congress Street. That the definition of construction needs to be clarified. Emptying a dumpster for the house next door to me happens at 7:30 in the morning. It's an enormous truck. When I say enormous, it may be a quarter of the size of the entire street. He has a great deal of difficulty backing into the lot. So it can be a 45-minute issue for him, and so the rest of us are awake.
And that's occurring at what time?
Quarter of seven.
I don't think we need to change anything on that then.
You're okay. It's no worries.
Good, just come to the microphone if you want.
It wakes me up too. But in fairness to the guy that has to pick up the recycle and the trash, people have been parking in front of the construction site. And one day last week, he couldn't even pick up the dumpster.
But just when you say recycling, I just want to be clear. This is construction dumpster?
It's the big, the big, the big.
Okay, okay.
Also, maybe we should hire Antifa to try to stop the windmills.
Okay, thank you. All right. What time can we pick up dumpsters? What's the earliest? Isn't that?
This is already regulated.
That's what I'm saying.
It's section 345-7G, loading and unloading. Loading and unloading from structures or motor vehicles, opening, closing, or other handling of boxes, crates, containers, building materials, garbage cans, or similar objects between the hours of 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM the following day in such a manner as to cause a noise disturbance across a residential property boundary, with the exception of, of building material which may, which shall be delivered between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM. So, you know.
So it's in the code. If, give code enforcement a call and we'll be on it. I mean, I. I mean, I, it doesn't help the morning that that happens, I, I understand, but yeah.
Sometimes people, sometimes people just aren't aware of this stuff. There is so much out there, there's so much in the code. And, and sometimes, and code enforcement and the police department, you know, they, they rely on people reporting it when there's an issue. So, you know, if you, if you hear something or there is a disturbance, you can, you can make that phone call and look into it. I'm sorry, yeah, just if you're going to speak, we just need you in the microphone.
I may be more sensitive than the average person because in the past three years, I've had huge construction on either side of my house.
We know, yeah.
You have to also understand that there are people that are going to live in these houses that are nice people, and they're about to be my neighbors. So I really would prefer not to have to keep calling the construction office and have them come out at 7:30 in the morning. Or the, you know, because I already have a neighbor that does that.
I see it less, and I'll, just from a practical standpoint.
Right.
A lot of this is, and just like this checklist, people are doing business in the City of Cape May. They're dropping off dumpsters, they're dropping off building materials, they're building houses, and they're making money in the City of Cape May. And part of this is to, to educate and re-educate some who may not be familiar with those provisions and say, "Look, these are the hours that we want things to happen." And before then, it may be a disturbance. So I see that, I don't see your comments as directed towards your neighbor. It's directed towards maybe the person driving over and, you know.
Well, here's a thought. Now, I have given paper to the people who are working at the location with the hours on it, just so there's clarity for them. Okay? But there's nothing on there that says anything about the definition of construction. So if someone could add something on there that said, "This includes emptying the dumpster, emptying what off of a truck," see, they don't see that as construction.
So Anita, Zach was just asking me, because we, we covered chapter 345-4 on this, Chris, and I think you referenced 345-5 when you were talking about it.
Correct, they're.
Okay.
They're both, on, on second reading, disturbing the peace.
So, I mean, you know, that, that's something that we can, you know, maybe talk about.
And, and that, how, how somebody who may be violating the ordinance interprets it subjectively may differ from the way a code enforcement officer may look at things. We, we look at these things not hyper-technically, but this is meant to be deployed in a common sense manner. And there's clearly a direction in here to limit it to certain hours. And I, I think the code enforcement office will, will, will get that concept and they're used to.
And typically, code enforcement is not coming out there with like lights on, blaring, and ready to write. They may even just call the, the business and just say, "Hey, you have somebody out here before our code hours. We're, we're asking you to please not do that again and consider this an official warning," you know.
Which is also why we want homeowners to be aware of this. Because, you know, they have a responsibility. If they're filing for an application, they need to be alerting their contractors that there are some rules and regulations. So it's just not the contractors, you know, the homeowner has some responsibility in this, so.
Any, any other public comment? Do you mind if we close the meeting and answer your question? Is that okay? Do we have any other public comment? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening. The time is now 6:41. Thank you.